June 15th, meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the role?
Chairman Woodfin.
Here.
Vice Chair Foss.
Here.
Counselor Pierce.
Here.
Member Hicks.
Here.
Member Fox.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Open the meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the May 18th minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Some move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any comment? Concerns, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Open up our agenda. We've got a full agenda tonight. Everything on the agenda will be heard. There's one item on the agenda that needs to be moved. So, anyone that's here for item 5A, which is catch neighborhood housing, is going to be moved down into the public hearing section. There's a determination of completeness component, and there's also a comprehensive design review that we want to have in an open forum on. So, we'll be moving that, and it'll follow item 7, wait, excuse me, hold on, 7C, which is right after the minor subdivisions and before the major site plans. So, it'll be recognized as item, well, it'll still be five, but we're going to treat it out of order. So, if anyone's here for that, just hang tight. We'll be there in just a few minutes. Okay, so that brings us to item 6 on our agenda, which is design review applications by consent. Consent agenda items are handled en masse from the board's perspective. So, we review all the applications. Note architectural design review, note architectural design review comments, and then vote on them in masse. So, if someone would like to remove anything from the consent agenda item, any member of the audience, we are going to move, item 8D has been pulled from the consent and moved to...
60.
60, I'm sorry. 60 was pulled from consent and moved from table to continue a public hearing. And we'll address that later on in the meeting. So, items 6A and B and C, right? Is that it?
Yes.
Does anyone have any concerns or questions about those applications?
Move, we accept.
Motion's been made to accept the consent agenda and second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
With recommendations to Counsel Pierce, your recommendation is to, with ADR recommendations, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the second is valid?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That brings us right to the public hearing section. See, I told you, we'd get right there quickly. So, here we are, Section 7, public hearing. If we could read item 7A into the agenda?
Well, so, 6D, I think we, I, it should have been done at the public hearing section. I apologize. It was last month, it was tabled.
Yep.
So, we have to remove it from the table in order to close the public hearing and vote on it. So, they did address the issues and concerns that ADR had and resubmitted an application. So, in order to approve it, the board needs to make a motion to remove it from the table, and, you know, you need to close the public hearing.
Okay, so it's item 10, it's item 10 on our agenda.
Oh, I apologize, okay.
Item 10 on the agenda was tabled. It's Cheshire Builders on behalf of Caleb Development. It was tabled from the last meeting, so I need a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The hearing is back open. We will close the public hearing.
Correct.
Close the public hearing. And do you need to vote on it for approval as submitted?
Um, yes, as resubmitted.
So, it's been resub, no?
Nope, that still needs to be tabled. It's 95 Villa Street that we will be voting on tonight. Chester Builders is going to ADR.
Uh-oh. I apologize.
Okay.
There was a snafu on that.
Let's move back to item 7. If we could read item 7A into the record?
Warren Street Architects and Wilcox and Barton on behalf of Mendota Properties request major site plan approval to convert a single-family residential home to a five-room residential social service center at 29 Talent Road in the open space residential district. Could you have an update?
Absolutely. Let's get a, let's get an update from staff.
Sure. So, last month, this was, a public hearing was open for this application on Talent Road, and there were several comments from the abutters regarding the condition of the road. So, the board continued it to this month for staff to do additional research and studies on whether the proposed application warranted any off-site improvements to Talent Road. So, we reached out to the fire department to get information on emergency calls to the similar facility on 52 Loop Road. Engineering staff, general services staff, and planning staff all visited the road to look at drainage, the existing conditions of the road, and then staff did a traffic study over several days to determine the number of vehicles existing traveling down the road. It looks like 60% of the travel, the vehicles traveling down the road are actually Canterbury people coming through, using it as almost a cut-through road. General services looked at the conditions of the road and did not think that they do, they said they do improvements or regrade the road two to three times per year. They did it in the spring, and they'll do it again in the summer, and again in the fall before the winter season. Fire department had done a study a couple of years ago. It's actually videotaped of seeing how they turned on that intersection, and I, it added about 10 seconds to their response time to get up that road. So, they did not think it warranted any upgrades to the intersection. So, with all that information, staff could not find any purpose or anything that warrants requiring that the applicant do any off-site improvements at this time. So, all the recommendations that staff submitted to the board last month still stand.
Okay, well, welcome to the table. If you could state your names to the record?
Yes, I'm Michael Maderas. I'm the executive director for Norristoree.
Erin Lambert with Wilcox and Barton. We're the site civil engineer in the project. Thank you very much to the city staff who all, in a very timely manner, did all of those things that Beth described in order to evaluate the question and come back with a decision or a recommendation that off-site improvements were not warranted. I'll keep my presentation brief. I just wanted to let you know that we did address a couple of the comments that we said that we would, including adding screening in the form of evergreens in front of the buried propane tanks as well as the parking spaces. We relocated the light pole that was in front of a retaining wall, and there was a concern that could get hit by a vehicle, so we moved it behind the retaining wall. And in addition, we've added a paved walkway from the ADA spaces. I just wanted to share one thing. So, we had hoped to put the ADA parking space here with the aisle and connect it to this walkway closer to the front door. However, we evaluated the grades, and we're unable to get a space there that meets ADA. And if we do get one there, it makes the cross slope on our driveway in excess of 8%. So, really, the closest parking space that we can construct that meets the ADA requirements, both of the parking space and the path to the front door, is where we had it shown. So, the parking space will stay where it is. It will be a concrete surface, and then there will be a paved walkway to the front door. So, that was the only thing I wanted to clarify. I had represented one thing last month, but when we took a look at the grade, this is really the closest space that we can, we can create. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
So, in the review comments, there was some questions regarding tree plantings. Are we all good with that, as far as the number of trees, or I just, I wasn't sure what the 8.18.17 tree plantings, so we're good with what's on the plan?
We're good, yeah. We just request when they use existing vegetation to count towards what is required. We ask them to put that note so that owner knows that if at any point in time those trees are cut down or damaged during construction, it's on the plans that they have to replace them in order to meet that requirement.
Okay. And then you said, Erin, I'm sorry, you said that you were going to be screening, doing some screening regarding the propane?
Exactly. There's buried propane to the right of the driveway, to the north, and we're proposing to put either arborvitae or a white spruce there, and I was going to work with staff to see if they had a recommendation or a preference, and then we'll do the same thing in front of the parking spaces to add some screening. There's a tree line shown on the plans, but it's rather sparse, and it certainly doesn't provide much screening down at, you know, car level, pedestrian level. So, these will provide a vegetative buffer in those two areas.
And I apologize, I can't find it in my, in the, in the documentation here, but I thought there was something about screening the generator as well.
There is. The generator, and I've added it to the plan on the screen, if you don't have it in your packet, we're putting a fence around the generator that will match the enclosure that's around the dumpster.
Okay.
You didn't submit these yet. Okay, all right, that's fine. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, can I just, one more thing?
Yes.
So, there's a note within here, when the fire department sent us that information about calls, there were several of them that were false alarms from residents pulling. So, we had put a recommendation. It's not necessarily something that we can regulate, but I just wanted to, I told Erin about it, I think, and if that was something, that is something that you can work with, just to reduce the number of false alarm calls to the facility.
If you'd like to educate our staff.
Okay.
Okay. Members of the board, questions? Comments? Concerns? Okay, so, clarify here, we have, the public hearing was opened.
Yes.
Public hearing's open.
It is.
We've accepted testimony from the residents. I do want to hear again if there's any more testimony, but, okay.
Yeah, you had continued the public hearing.
So, we continued the public hearing, so we can go from there. Any member of the audience wish to address this application? No? We'll close the public hearing. Any other comments from staff regarding the application?
No, we did get additional clarification on the RSA if anybody wants more information.
Yes.
674, thank you. I did, I did mean to, I wrote it down and didn't ask the question, so.
Yep, so, the city solicitor's office, Danielle Passick, she had done this analysis before we did the application, and she just reiterated. So, it's actually case law regarding things that come through Department of Health and Human Services. So, they specifically authorize a municipality to apply all aspects of its zoning ordinances, such as parking, landscaping, buffers, and other zoning requirements. However, a municipality cannot deny the proposed location of a community living facility since a zoning restriction has been determined to be preempted under state law, and it's for any facility that is licensed under RSA 126-A19. So, it's not the standard 674-54 application. It's through the Department of Health and Human Services.
So, as I understand it, we could have these in every residential neighborhood in Concord?
Yep.
That seems ridiculous. So, who do we go to at the state level?
Department of Health and Human Services. We spoke with Peter Bacon. He's the community residence coordinator.
Great. I don't remember that name.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I have, more staff.
Yep.
So, Mr., I think it was Mr. Stevenson testified last month. I was reading in the minutes that when he went for a subdivision for his property and he went with four units, there were concerns about the intersection, and response, was it with fire? Because now fire doesn't have the same concern, even though there'd be fewer homes, then there would be residents and people working in this facility.
Right, so, we, that was, none of those studies have been done at that time. We're not sure. It was previous engineering staff that had made that recommendation. So, staff spoke to Mr. Stevenson, and we are recommending to the board, and it'll be a separate, I think it needs to be noticed as a separate application to remove that condition from Mr. Stevenson's plan.
I would think that'd be the fairest thing to do.
Yep, right. Yep. Yeah, none of those studies were done at that time, so.
Okay, so, with that, we'll move into recommendations. We've got in your packet, your recommendations under 4.1 is to grant ADR approval for the proposed site plan as submitted with the conditions that the generator be screened with plantings and/or fencing. And again, I think that the applicant addressed that with additional issues. Would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 4.2 is to grant the following waiver requests using RSA 674-443EC1, or I, as guidance, staff believes will strictly conformity will pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And that's, the waiver is 4.2, which is parking lot markings and signage, and 4.2, I'm sorry, 4.21, which is parking lot markings and signage, and 4.22, which is driveway widths to allow an existing 13-foot driveway width where a 20-foot driveway is required for two-way traffic. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Second, I'll second. All those, or any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and 4.3 is to grant major site plan approval for the site improvements at 29 Talent Road subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1, 2, and 3, and subsequent conditions 1. Someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, 4.3. So, you're all set. Thank you very much for your testimony, for your, for delay. I appreciate it. Got us all squared away and lined up, so that worked out well. All right, let's move on to item 7B in our agenda. Could we read that into the record?
7B, Richard Bartlett and Associates, on behalf of Stephanie Bradley, request minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment between 197 and 199 Oak Hill Road in open space residential district. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we've got a determination of completeness component. We've got that the staff has determined it's not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing's open. We get a quick staff update?
I'm sure, just a simple lot line adjustment. The, this is a subdivision that was done several years ago. It was a cluster subdivision, so there was a conservation easement across the lots. The family is looking to sell one of the lots, so they want to do a lot line adjustment. So, the conservation easement is only on one lot, and this will also correct a driveway that crosses that, the other lot. So, it's correcting a nonconformity. They're just looking for one waiver, and staff supports it regarding how the information is presented in the state plan coordinates.
All right, welcome to the table. If you could state your name, you're unknown to us here. If you could state your name for the record?
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Sargent, and I'm with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates.
So, Mr. Sargent, you are the chief of, simple lot line adjustments being the first word out of staff's mouth, so.
You guys gotta love me.
Congratulations on that.
You guys gotta love me.
So, let's, let's hear what you got here, and we'll, we'll go forward.
Okay, well, I'm here tonight representing Ms. Bradley, and she owns two parcels of property on Oak Hill Road. The first is at 197. It has an area of 21.02 acres with 220 feet of frontage on Oak Hill Road, a single-family home, and that's the one you can see that is closest to Oak Hill Road with an on-site well and septic. The second lot is directly abutting, 199 Oak Hill Road, area of 19.45 acres, 120 feet of frontage, also has a single-family home and an on-site septic and well. And I'm just kind of showing the first sheet here, because the remaining two sheets are just kind of backland. But the proposal before the board this evening is to annex 19 acres of 197 to 199. So, 197 now will kind of extend up into this area here, just south of the driveway that services 199, and has an area of 2.02 acres after the lot line adjustment. So, that gives a new lot area for 199 of 38.45 acres, and there's no change in the frontage of either lot. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? Yes, sir, come on up. Have you step back, Mark? Yep, please.
Hello.
Hello, how are you? Welcome to the table.
I'm David Moore. I live at 189 Oak Hill.
All right.
So, I'm just curious, what is exactly being done with the two driveways?
Sorry, 189 is a, a butter, a direct a butter, or just a neighbor?
Correct, I'm on a butter.
Okay, yep, sorry. And what was your question again?
What exactly is being done to address the two driveways? I called and asked, didn't really get a clear answer. Because I know road frontage was an issue originally when this was divided up, so.
There's no new driveways proposed. So, one of the driveways cuts through the smaller lot, so the driveway to the house that's in the back.
Yes.
Cuts.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
So, the lot line is being shifted so that the driveway.
Okay, so it's, when you're dividing up the property.
Yep.
197 is being, this is the first that I know, so I don't know what.
Yeah, so.
This is the first I know what's going on.
Correct me if I'm wrong. It's difficult to see because it's so fuzzy.
Just curious.
Yeah, so this lot will be significantly smaller. Right now, it kind of goes back.
I'll show you on the screen here.
Okay.
But, you know, the lot line kind of goes.
So, is the property going to be bigger on 197?
199 is going to get bigger.
Okay, so you're coming down to me.
197, which is the older house.
Yeah, you're going to come, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, so the new lot line goes like this, right in here. So, the older house.
That's me, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so you're just changing it because it's driveway up in the back, not down by the road?
Right, yeah, just in the rear, behind the house.
That's all I wanted clarification, what that was. Okay. Nope, that answers that question.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. If you could sign, yeah, if you could sign in, sir, sorry.
Yes, sir.
If you could just sign in on the sheet there. Start sending your emails every week.
You may have won something at Target or Costco.
Gas?
It's coming from the city councilor, so better believe it.
All right, any other questions from the audience? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. So, in your packet, we've got recommendations to grant the waiver to Section 12.09 to the subdivision regulation to not provide electronic data referencing in the New York, in New Hampshire. Jeez, New Hampshire state coordinates based on NAV Day 1988. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motions been, motions made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 3.2 is to grant major, minor, excuse me, grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment to annex 19 acres from map 23Z Lot 6 of 197 Oak Hill Road to map 23Z Lot 7, which is 199 Oak Hill Road in the open space residential district. Would someone like to make a motion now, Lisa, can you help me out here, or somebody help me out on the, are there precedent conditions down underneath?
Yep, they're on the next page. There's six of them.
Okay, so, it doesn't say precedent. Okay, so precedent, so, so, to grant minor subdivision approval with precedent conditions 1 through 6 as outlined, someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. It all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set. Simple lot line adjustment. Keep it up. All right, let's move on to item 7C in our agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Mark, I'm not sure how to pronounce this.
Boucher.
Is it Boucher?
Is it Boucher?
Boucher, yep.
Request minor subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision for land off Elm Street and Pennacook in the medium-density residential district. Staff recommends the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we've got a determination.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not, my brain is not on today. It is a DRI because it shares a lot of boundary with Bosque.
Okay, so we've got a determination.
It was noticed.
Is that true?
Yes.
So we've got a determination.
Is that true?
Oh, okay.
So it does share a lot line, or it's?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a determination of completeness component. Staff has determined that it is a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, label it as a development of regional impact affecting Bosque and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing is open, is the applicant here? Can we get a staff update on this?
Sure. So this is a DRI simply because a portion of the parent lot is, it does straddle the Bosque and Concord line. It's very limited, however, this did go to the Bosque Planning Board last week. I spoke with the town planner there, they have approved the subdivision. It is just a two-lot subdivision. There are a couple waivers requested, topographic survey and wetlands. The topographic data was provided by LIDAR but was not field verified. The wetlands actually believe the applicant is rescinding that waiver because the wetland scientist was just delayed in flagging, and we do have an updated plan. However, the wetlands are very, at a great distance from the new lot being created, so it does not really affect this subdivision in particular. However, if the applicant was to subdivide the lot in the future further, it may come into play then.
Okay, so we'll be removing 12.085 from the request for waivers?
Correct.
Okay, remind me when we get to that point, if we get to that point. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Good evening, sir, I'm Joe Wickert, I'm the land surveyor that prepared the plan in front of the board this evening, so, I'm not sure how to change this one.
Just hit the X up on the top of Plan 21, and.
Go down to the PDF, there's, it's, yeah.
Yep, nope, all the way to the right.
Yeah, that's the agenda, and then just click on your, your 7D.
There's no. Why didn't there no plans?
There we go.
That's the other one, isn't it?
That's, um.
Okay.
Got it here, if you want me to email it to anybody?
That help?
Let me flash one, I can throw this on a flash drive real fast. This actually works out because we have the updated plan, I'll throw it on a flash drive and plug it in.
Do you have a million on your, I don't have one.
I have a map. Yeah, plans.
Do you have one?
Oh, there it is, okay. I didn't go far enough. No, but you go to here.
No, it's not opening here, it's opening the wrong one.
So go back.
So he now has an updated plan that was provided.
Oops. So go, oh, you're not in Grant, I guess, you're on the website. Yeah, that's why.
Anything you can tell us about it to get started?
There we go.
No? What are you doing up here?
I moved up here last month.
I know that. I was talking to.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We were too busy to show up and be a test.
Maybe it's for those keeping score at home.
Yeah.
No?
Okay.
Excuse me, making one really small.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Your time's up.
Those are my best ones. So, I'm sorry, good evening for, just for the record, Joe Wickert, and I'm the surveyor that prepared the plan this evening. So the applicant is Mark Boucher. He is the owner of the current property. The property is configured is 12.5, almost 12.55 acres, has a total frontage of 700 and almost 94 feet. It's on the north side of Elm Street. It, Harding Brook kind of doesn't bisect it, but it kind of cuts through on the, on the westerly side here. For anybody that was on the board previously, I think in 17 or 18, my office subdivided off the existing residence at 152 Elm Street, and we left this remainder parcel. So the application from this evening, tonight, is to create one new building lot. It's going to be in this southeast corner. The property is, it's split zoned, as you can see right here, so anything east or northeast of this is RM, anything south or southwest of that is RO. The, in this case, what we're trying to do is create one RM building lot. That RM building lot would be serviced by Municipal Sewer and Water. The sewer, there's a sewer manhole that, that's right here, that's the end of the existing municipal sewer line. The sewer, the water line ends right here, so we can do this, the one lot, without any utility extensions, and we would just do services for the new lot. The lot is entirely, the new lot being proposed is entirely buildable. As Sam had mentioned, we had asked for two waivers. So we're showing LIDAR contours, we have field topo west of the brook from the work we did in 2017. We have LIDAR contours on east of the brook. We have field verified, like a line about 150 feet off the road. We did not topo out back, just to, just to try to save a little time and money right now. The new, from, if you had looked at the plan previously, so we've had this line, the east line of the brook wetlands complex has been delineated. The wetland scientist went out and looked at the property, so there is actually a little wetlands here on the northwest corner, two small pockets that are here. Those pockets are less than 3,000 square feet, but they're shown on the plan. We've shown the buildable area envelopes, we have shown the proposed driveway locations, and be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, questions from the board? Looks pretty straightforward. You should add Mark Sargent here, he would help Joe get through the, oh, simple lot line adjustment. Any questions from the audience regarding this application? No? All right, we will close the public hearing, and in your packet, we've got 4.1, which is to grant the waivers from the following, excuse me, grant the waivers from the following sections of the subdivision regulations utilizing the criteria of RSA 674362N2, and that, again, will just be for full topography survey. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those, that, that one waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, sorry, I have technical difficulties here. All right, 4.2 is to grant minor subdivision approval for the two-lot subdivision at 126 Elm Street, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions? Right, Sam? Or Beth, sorry?
I was going to say conditions.
Conditions 1 through 7. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, and again, we'll be moving down, we're going to take number 5, what was it, 5?
Mm-hmm.
5, out of order here, so if we could read item 5 into the record, I can't close this.
Catch Neighborhood Housing requests major site plan approval to construct a three-story multifamily building consisting of 48 units, and a conditional use permit to not provide a commercial use at 303 Sheep Davis Road in the Gateway Performance District. This also has a comprehensive development plan component, and they are asking to review the comprehensive development plan this evening. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete, and that we open a public hearing to discuss the comprehensive development.
Okay, and just for clarity, it's not a development of regional impact?
Correct.
It's not, need a pen work, okay. Okay, so we have a determination of completeness component, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, just for the public as well, this is determination of completeness component and comprehensive design review. This is not application, this isn't a site plan approval or anything like that, so we're not ready to talk about what's going to be on the property yet, other than adjusting concept. Correct, Sam?
Correct.
Correct, all right. Where do we go from here?
I would recommend that you open the public hearing.
All right, have the applicant come up?
Evening, everyone, Chris Neto with Novus Group.
Alexandria with Catch Neighborhood Housing.
Great, welcome to the table. Tell us a little bit about your project.
So Catch is looking to develop 48 units of housing on a 6.3-acre site at 303 Sheep Davis Road, and we're proposing the 48 units in a single three-story building. When we take away all the steep slopes and the wetland buffer and setbacks, we're left with about 2.6 acres out of the total lot size of 6.3. So we're showing here on the site plan, the building is roughly 50,000 square feet in total. We're proposing 84 parking spaces, and again, since this is the Gateway Performance District, we, we actually have to, in order to do residential on the property, we have to do the comprehensive development plan. And in doing so, we're required to have 25% commercial space on, on the property, which in order to not do that, we're asking for a conditional use permit to not have to do the 25% commercial on the site, just doing the residential. And again, that's really because of the constraints of the property that really the only thing that will fit here is the residential, the 48 units. And the reason 48 units is, is sort of a magic number as far as financing with, this is obviously workforce housing, we finance through New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, so that's, 48 units is kind of the sweet spot as far as financing for, for these types of workforce housing projects. I can show you the aerial in case anybody's curious or isn't familiar with exactly where we are, but again, the bottom of the screen is Sheep Davis Road, the back left-hand corner there is, is Walmart. The site actually shares a driveway off Sheep Davis Road with, with the abutting commercial use next door, so it's sort of a heavy equipment rental place.
And Chris, that's, is that right at the top of the, is it just cresting at the top of the hill at that, where that abutting building is, or is it just kind of on the downslope?
It's right across the street from Sam's Club.
Right, so it's just almost at the top of that hill, right? So your property's sloping up the whole way?
And then it goes down to the brook as you, as you head towards Walmart.
Towards the back.
Yep, yeah, there's, there's a brook that runs along the entire property boundary between Walmart and this site.
And that big pond is on that other side of the Walmart, I just tried to think, right?
The one.
It's on the other side of the driveway?
Yep, that's right, between that and the mall. So again, this is under New Hampshire DOT jurisdiction through here, it is a shared driveway, so we're not actually building a new entrance, it's, it's going to be the same driveway as, as, as there now, right across from Sam's Club. So that, that's really it, and we're here to answer questions that the board has.
Okay, questions from the board, Matt?
My first question is, the shared use driveway with a heavy equipment company there and resident, presence of your facility driving and sharing that driveway, and safety issues with big machines driving out?
Sure, yeah, we actually have done a traffic study, which we'll be submitting as part of the application and submitting to DOT. That talks about the interaction of, of the traffic in the driveway, so what we've done to, to try and make a safe entrance and exits, we have stop conditions for, for folks as they're coming down this driveway, they have to stop, you have to stop coming out here, and then the equipment coming off of the site will have to stop as well. The only through traffic will be incoming traffic.
So is this driveway right across from the Sam's driveway?
Directly across, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Matt? No? You good?
Well, they're going to produce a traffic study, so that's going to answer the questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application?
No?
Wow, all right.
Much-needed housing.
Much-needed housing. We will close the public hearing, and in your packet, we have just number 5, right? Who's this, Sam, is this yours?
Yes.
So just number 5, 5.1, pending the submission of a revised CDP and site plan showing a sidewalk along the site's frontage, staff recommends determining the application complete. Would some, I guess we've already done that.
Yep.
And staff recommends that the board grant the comprehensive development plan approval as depicted in the revised proposed site plan sheet received June 7, 2022. Would someone like to make a motion to grant comprehensive development plan as the plan approval as outlined, is that right?
Does it show the sidewalk on there, and do we want that?
Not at this time, so relative to the sidewalk conversation, this is DOT right-of-way, so this is going to be up to DOT, so the question is, does the sidewalk find itself within the right-of-way or on private property, and that's a conversation we need to have with DOT.
So maybe we could say, subject to the location of the sidewalk being determined.
Subject to the location of the sidewalk, not if there's going to be one, but if there's going to be. The, the only question that I did have, and I didn't bring it up, I was going to wait, but is this going to be a bus, is there going to be any bus service into this, into this?
I'm in discussions with the Concord Transit Authority.
Okay, so that may affect sidewalk as well? Right? Potentially. Okay, so you want me to rephrase it, or are we just good knowing that the?
Well, I don't think it's showing the sidewalk at this time, so we need to definitely make some kind of allowance or condition for the fact that there will be a sidewalk, we just don't know where.
So the 5.2 is a grant comprehensive development plan approval, subject to staff reviewing the sidewalk placement with DOT and the applicant. How about that?
Done this before.
All right, any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor of granting?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Wait till the last second.
Well, you know.
Put your hand up.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The, is staff fine with the waiver on the 25% commercial?
We're in support of the conditional use.
You're in support of it, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to grant that comprehensive plan approval as outlined?
I will, so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set, good luck. Looked forward to seeing you back here in a little while?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on. I gotta back down to the bottom here, okay. Let's move on to 7D, so this will be you, read 7D into the record?
Will Cox and Barton, on behalf of 125 North State Street LLC, requests major site plan approval for construction of a three-story office building addition at 125 North State Street in the Neighborhood Residential District. I believe staff probably has an update on this.
Okay, I need to recuse myself from this application, so I'm going to have Carol take over. Good luck.
Thank you.
Staff report?
Staff report?
Yes. So.
What? Excuse me? We're inviting, we're inviting, I'm sorry, why is she not? Is she coming up here? Are you coming?
You're doing her well so far, Sam.
Yeah. So Amanda Savage is a planning board member, so she's joining us and will help. We just had Bridget.
Oh, good.
But I wasn't sure why.
I didn't really want to.
I wasn't sure why she wasn't already up here, I guess, because I was confused.
You're hiding in the back.
Quarter of eight, Amanda Savage.
Amanda Savage joined us at seven forty-five.
Thank you.
I didn't know that was happening.
Okay. Christine, staff report?
Yes. So this application was determined complete back in March. At that time, the proposed addition was more substantial than what you see in your packets today. I would point you to, I believe, page four of your packet. This will provide a little bit of a history on the proposed addition. As you see in the green, that was the original. That contemplated a five-car carriage house attached to the three-story office tower addition. In March, we saw the blue footprint, but that has now been pared down to the red footprint. Over this process, there's been a lot of collaboration with ADR. They've had some good conversations and recommendations, and the applicant has been responsive, and ADR is in favor of the addition as designed. And the addition is respectful of their neighbors, the new Pocket Neighborhood. I believe there were some concerns over the scale of it and its proximity. We have received a number of letters of support. I cannot speak to if they are directed butters or not. I'll let the applicant do that. They did just come in today. They, I believe, are in your packets under supplemental material. And aside from that, there is not much else to comment on relative to the site as it was designed during the phase in which the conference room on the southern elevation of the site was developed. There were a number of variances received at that time, and because the conference room was developed, the variances were vested at that time as substantial progress on those. So not much else to report.
Okay. In that case, shall we open the public hearing?
Thank you. My name is Fred Potter, and Aaron, with whom you're quite familiar, is getting ready. I'll just give a brief background. This is the last major step in, and I want to thank city staff and all the committees here. There's been yeoman's work to take a very difficult situation along North State Street and make it just spectacular. But for me, this goes back for nearly fifteen years, but most recently, over the last five years, a renovation of several properties along North State Street in coordination with John Shorely, and who I think we all agree did a magnificent job on the Pocket Neighborhood. So thank you, and it's good to be back again, and hopefully this is the last major step. This echoes back to the very first step fifteen years ago, when we were concerned about handicap accessibility. And those who followed our work know that every place we touch, we try to bring full accessibility. This replaces a stair tower constructed by the state, and we're back with some urgency because it's in a state of structural collapse. And I think you'll find this a far more attractive solution. And we're pleased to be back, and thank you very much for enduring all of this.
Perfect. Erin Lambert with Wilcox and Barton. I did prepare a few slides just to share with you. So this is the site plan that's before you. I'll zoom in so we can see. So this is the addition that we are proposing. It's a two-thousand-twenty-six-square-foot, three-story addition. As Fred said, it includes a one-car garage and an elevator tower. The gross square footage of the addition is sixty-seven-eighty-four, which will bring the total building to sixteen thousand, six hundred square feet. As Sam was mentioning, the initial building plan back in two thousand nineteen had the building at twenty thousand square feet. So it has been parred back from there. Twenty-eight parking spaces are required per the zoning variance that was granted. We are providing twenty-nine, one of which is the parking space in the garage. The exterior improvements, there's no additional pavement being built, however, it's going to need to be regraded. The reason for that is we need to bring the ADA parking spaces into compliance with grades. They exceed the two percent right now. And also, we're providing access into the garage. So like I said, the footprint of the parking lot isn't changing, but it will be regraded, and that's what you see in gray. So everyone will be sharing the front door. If you looked at the plans that were submitted in March, we had a separate entrance. But the addition, as well as the existing building, will all use the front door, and we will continue to use the ADA access that will come off that center aisle between the two parking spaces. To the north, you'll see there is a small patio that would be accessed from the basement level. It's about eighteen inches below grade, will be surrounded by a retaining wall and some plantings. It will be pervious pavers, so all the water that lands down there will infiltrate. The grading plan, as you can see, we are working to save as many trees as possible. This plan shows all of the trees around the perimeter that will be preserved. The only trees that are coming down are ones that are directly impacted by the building footprint. And one thing that's not in your packet, and I apologize for the lateness in getting this, but with everyone's schedules, I couldn't get the landscape plan in time to get it in your packets. But this is the landscape plan we will be resubmitting to the city. So at the entrance, or sort of flanking the garage of the new addition, we're proposing two planting beds, which will have shrubs and perennials. And then around the patio, we're proposing to do a ring of hydrangeas, and there's a couple of lilac bushes. And then to fill in the remainder of the buffer to the north, we're adding four white spruce. And those are the trees that you see here. I did bring some pictures to show you what that buffer looks like today. So the first picture on the left is standing in the driveway and looking north at Rollins Court. So you can see there are three evergreens that were planted as part of the parking lot reconstruction in two thousand nineteen. And then there's some other sort of well-established vegetation. It's a combination of evergreens and some smaller deciduous trees. And if you look here, I'm looking more northeast. This area here, where you can see the fence, which is on the Rollins Court property, there is a portion there that doesn't have any screening. So that's where we're proposing to put four white spruce. But as you can see, the property is beautiful, and we'll be maintaining that. So that's where the four spruce are going. Just wanted to give you a quick preview of the elevations that were presented to ADR. So this is the State Street elevation. And as Fred mentioned, the real driver and really important aspect of this project is the elevator tower. Not only will it provide accessibility on each level in the addition, but also to the existing building, which doesn't exist today. And we need to replace that stair tower because it's in a state of disrepair. So this is what you would see if you were on North State Street facing west. This is the elevation facing south. If you were standing with the Rollins Court fence right behind us, this is what you would see. So you can see the three levels, as well as this is where the patio level will be. The garage is one-story, and there's a small deck over it. This is the view that we would see in the parking lot. So this is facing east. This is the single-car garage. And again, the elevator tower. And this is a view from Franklin Street. The addition really tucks in nicely. You can see the architects work hard to maintain existing roof lines and tie the architecture in to the existing building. We've been to ADR a number of times, and they are very happy with the direction that this is going. Just had this in my presentation, I didn't realize Sam was going to cover this ahead of time, but this just exemplifies the history or the evolution of the building. And as we said, the pink or red smaller footprint, the consolidated footprint, is what we are requesting site plan approval for. It gives us more opportunity to have the outside patio and provide screening to the north. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
Are you sure these landscaping plans would meet the approval of our member who's not really here tonight?
I hope so. I brought a big, I brought a big plan for Suzanne, so I'm glad you asked that. I brought a big plan.
Okay.
The trees that are on the plan, that exist today for the parking lot, were part of the two thousand nineteen approval, and they meet the parking requirement. So everything we are proposing today, we hope would meet Suzanne's satisfaction.
Tough.
I know. I know. So I hope so.
Okay. I felt as though I should ask.
I appreciate it.
I have no idea what you just said.
If I may interject, then I would actually agree with Aaron on that, the rhododendron, the spirea, those are all things that are currently in this, as kind of like native plants, maybe not native, but do survive in our climate. So I would, I would, I'll step in for Suzanne.
Thank you.
Those are big shoes.
I know.
The roots.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience or comments on this application?
Good evening. My name is Nick Holmes. I am, I live at one-thirty-one North State Street, unit two. I'm a member of the Rollins Court Pocket Neighborhood. And I'm here on behalf of all of the people that live in Rollins Court. Millie Dustin, Chuck and Bonnie Katcher, Fred and Linda Gudis, John Roxby, Felice Bernstein, Ron and Maureen Oliver, my wife Bridgette, and Mike and Millie LaFontaine. There are thirteen of us that live here in Rollins Court, and we all have concerns about this development. Rollins Court, as you're aware of, is a very unique property. It is eight units on one-point-two-one acres, very, very dense. And the reason it's a success, and the reason it survives, and the reason why it's a great place to live, is because we have, we share our front lawn. This project is going to be looming over our front lawn, over our private area, and so we have concerns about it. I would like to thank Mr. Potter for recognizing some of our concerns, and most recently proposing some plantings. But we still have concerns despite what he has done. So I'd like to make one comment and raise three concerns. The first comment is on the letters from, in support of the application that we received today. One is from Mr. and Mrs. Potter. They don't live in Rollins Court. I don't believe they've ever spent a night there. They obviously have an interest in having this approved. And the others are all from Mr. Potter's tenants, and I think that speaks for itself. The issues that we have a concern with, scale and proportion. This project is going to essentially double the size of the existing business there. I know that it's been presented to you as a three-story addition. From the elevations, as you could see from our perspective, because it's on a higher piece of property and it has a walkout basement, we are going to see a four-story addition, a four-story office tower looking over our private area. A large portion of this, I don't know if the architectural drawings have been submitted to you, but a large portion of this will have glass, large glass windows overlooking our yard. I know that from reading the site plan regulations, I know that some of the purposes of the site plan review are to ensure, I'm going to read from twenty-six-point-zero-four, "to ensure that non-residential uses in residential areas shall be designed and to be compatible in scale and harmonious in design with the surrounding residential neighborhood." This property is going to be about two stories taller than all of our cottages. I would submit that the plans that have been submitted are inadequate and don't give you the information that you need in order to make a judgment on this. Sections twelve-point-four and twelve-point-five of the site plan regulations require the applicant to submit plans showing, among other things, other physical, significant physical and man-made features. Twelve-point-oh-four, fourteen-point-oh parentheses D, close parentheses. The plans shall include any previously approved subdivision or adjacent site plan. Fourteen-point-oh-two, parentheses E, close parentheses. Any other significant man-made or natural features which have relevance to the development of the site need to be shown. All of the drawings are consistent. Rollins Court doesn't exist on any of the site plans. The neighbors to the west, over three hundred feet away, are shown. The houses on the other side of Franklin Street are shown. Our property, which is about thirty feet away, thirty-five feet away from this office tower addition, is not shown. I would submit that that is an error in the application, and the application is not truly complete, and that this board should ask for a full site plan that shows Rollins Court, so that you can assess the impact on our residences, on our homes. The architectural drawings show that there are significant public areas in this proposed office tower, which will be directly over our private yard, over our patio, where we gather, where we relax. There is going to be a large conference room. There's going to be, with six large windows. There's going to be a smaller conference room, again with six large, with six windows. There's going to be a configurable seating area. There are going to be numerous offices which overlook that area. And there's going to be a deck over the rear garage, where people can gather for parties or whatever, overlooking our private area. I would submit that it is a stretch to suggest that this is, that this office tower addition is compatible and harmonious with Rollins Court Pocket Neighborhood. When Mr. Potter applied for his variances back in two thousand nineteen, he represented that Rollins Court was not going to be built. At that time, it was not going forward. It was a completely different situation. At this point, if he needs, he needs to submit a proposal which is compatible and harmonious. The second issue I'd like to address is the buffer. Thank you, Mr. Potter and your team, for recognizing that a buffer is appropriate. We received their plan this morning. I would submit that even though there are proposing four pine trees, that those are not adequate. The plan does not show enough detail. There should be requirements such as that the heights of these trees at installation should be ten to fifteen feet. That might cover the first two stories. It will still leave the top two stories bare, but at a minimum, they should be that high. At the time of the installation, they should be installed before certificate of occupancy is granted. There should be an obligation upon the applicant to maintain that buffer, including not loping off the limbs down below or topping off the trees. This board has the power to make a buffer, a condition of any approval, and we would urge the board to look at that carefully and make sure that that is set in stone, so there's no question going forward. We don't want to have four scrawny pine trees that aren't tall enough to provide any buffer that are not maintained. That would not be right. Our most important concern is the stormwater management issue. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the parish, the St. Peter's Parish that used to be there, but water in the basement was an issue. This is an area where stormwater management is a very, very important issue. We would again submit that the application is not complete, is not properly before you. Section twelve-point-oh-six-B of the site plan regulations require the applicant to reference, quote, easements, which are for the purposes of providing drainage to the properties proposed to be developed. I would also refer the board to section fourteen-point-oh-two, the site plan regulations. They require a site plan analysis that shall contain, at a minimum, easements for storm drainage. There is an easement in this case. There is an easement that Rollins Court has granted to one-twenty-five North State Street. That is not referenced in the application. That is not before you. That is why we are submitting this application, is incomplete and deficient. We are also very, very concerned that the proposal that is before you tonight does not comply with that easement. The applicant is proposing that virtually all of the stormwater from this addition will go into the Rollins Court drainage system. We have a large underground stormwater storage area underneath our green, and that feeds into the city's mains at a controlled rate. It's a well-designed system, but it's a system that cannot be overloaded. If it is overloaded, the consequences for us could be horrendous. If there is flooding, we have, well, seven basements that could easily be filled with water. We don't want to risk that. We should not have to risk that. The applicant should be required to provide you with the easement and to show you that the application complies with the easement to the letter. I've raised this with the applicant, and my concerns were rejected. But let me share my concerns with you tonight. The easement is clear. It allows one-twenty-five North State Street to allow three types of stormwater to go onto the Rollins Court property. The first is stormwater from the parking area. That goes into catch basin one. That's happening now. That will continue. That is not an issue. The second is overland water can flow onto the Rollins Court lot. That is happening now. That is not an issue. The third is that drains are allowed on the one-twenty-five North State Street property, but they can only be foundation drains. They cannot be tied to gutters. They cannot be tied to downspouts. And I know you guys are all familiar with stormwater, and the reason is obvious. If a gutter discharges onto the land... If a gutter discharges onto the land before it gets into the foundation drain, there is going to be a lot of it infiltrating down into the aquifer down below, and it's not going to go into the storm sewer, into the storm water management system. The applicant here has connected all of the roof drains, both on the south side conference room and in the proposed new addition. He's proposing connecting them directly to our storm water management system. He is guaranteeing that 100% of the precipitation that falls on his building, on the new sections of his building, is going into the drainage system. That's not allowed under the easement. That is begging a problem in the future. That should be resolved before this is allowed to go forward. The second issue that we have is the amount of impervious area that the applicant is allowed to add on the lot is limited to 3,500 square feet. He has already added 997 square feet in the conference room, which was built after the easement was put in place. He's now proposing an addition that will bring him approximately 600 feet, square feet, over the limit. This is a designed system, a carefully designed system, but more importantly, we have an easement. And the four corners of the easement, they define what the applicant is allowed to do and what we must allow him to do. We are willing to let the applicant use the portion of the easement that he's entitled to, but no more. And we would submit that this application, in its current stage, is number one, deficient, because he hasn't given you all of the necessary information, and number two, is improper, because it exceeds the terms of our easement. And for those reasons, we would ask that this hearing, this portion of the public hearing, be continued, and that the applicant be required to submit plans that show Rollins Court neighborhood, that define with precision the buffer that he is going to build, because that's going to be key, if there's ever any addition, to ensure that there is harmonious and compatible development of these two properties. And number three, to submit a drainage plan that does not include drains tied directly into our system. The site plan regulations encourage the use of infiltration as a way of managing storm water. He is not doing that. He is doing everything he can to quickly direct all of this storm water from this large area into the storm water drainage system. That is a concern to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Simon, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Carol.
I have a question.
Does the board have questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Holmes.
Go for it.
Mr. Holmes, thank you very much for your testimony. On the issue of trees, it seems as though Mr. Potter has been pretty open with the neighborhood and certainly with the planning board. Have you spoken with him regarding the 15-foot trees for a buffer?
We have had, we have not, we did not, we received the landscape proposal this morning at around 10 o'clock.
Okay.
And I have another job.
No, I understand.
So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. I just wanted to get the timing straight.
What I was trying to impress upon the board was if this project is allowed to go forward, which it may be, once he addresses the other issues, a key component will be the buffer, and ensuring that that buffer was there. The proposal that we were here on in March had no buffer. It had structures within the 10-foot setback from our, from our fence, and I thank Mr. Potter for moving away from that and for approving that. But I want, we need that buffer to be well-defined and to ensure that it is truly going to provide a level of privacy, since privacy is one of the things that this board is charged with ensuring is protected. This is a very, very private area for us. I don't know if you're familiar with Rollins Court, but our lot is long, and we have the public area down by where all the rose bushes are with the picket fence.
Which are beautiful, by the way.
Yes. That's Bonnie's part. She's the one that does it. She's in the audience. And then, as you move back along our green, at the very back is our private area. That's where we have our community patio and where we have our vegetable gardens. This office tower will be looking over our patio. This parking lot will be looking over our community gardens. This is affecting our most private portion of Rollins Court.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Are you going to get to that?
I have no questions for Mr. Holmes.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
For this gentleman? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this proposal? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
No offense, but my son's getting married next weekend, and I will be there dancing, so I'm going to keep a good distance from you. Please don't take it as anything other than that. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Karen Carew. I am one of the owners at 104 North State Street. That is the building that is right across the street from 125. There's the circle, there's 125, and we're on the other side. I cannot speak to, and this was the first time I heard some of the concerns with respect to the easements and the sewer and the drainage. But as I sat here, I remember being here several years ago and listening to the neighbors' concerns about putting in the pocket neighborhood. And now we're here again revisiting some of the concerns when there's change. And so while I certainly respect all of that, I felt it was important for you guys to hear that as another owner, I have appreciated the effort and the care that's been taken with the existing building, with the architecture when the conference room was put on, with saving that big, beautiful, old, I think it was the rectory, right, on further up the corner, and the care that's been taken to blend all of that together within the landscape. So one of the things that I was concerned about immediately with this addition was how does it impact the views, the walkability of the neighborhood, the green space, and how the entire area feels? And I must confess, I was a little confused by, by the comments, because when I was looking at the addition, I'm sitting at the front, looking at the front of 125 North State Street. The addition is running alongside of it, and they had talked about it was going to be looking over their yard. But if I remember correctly, there's a fence and a driveway, and then the back of their garages, and then their houses, and then that common area. So they're right. It is going to be taller. There may be some view there, but that exists now in the existing building, I believe, which is already three stories. So to me, it just sounded very similar to when the pocket neighborhood was going in, and any change in, in anyone's backyard makes them hesitant and worried. So I wanted to at least express, again, as I said, my support for what's been done, how it's been done, and I hopefully they can come to some type of feel-good neighborhood again, once the change has been done. Any questions or thoughts?
Any questions?
I'm sorry, that was your job.
Can you tell what Mr. Board means?
She's new.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony, and be sure you sign in on.
I can do that.
Any other questions, comments from the audience on this application?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to correct Mrs. Carew. There are portions of our property that are separated from 125 North State Street, as she said, by a driveway and a cottage and then the park yard. But in this particular location, it will be the addition, 30 feet approximately, then our property, then our yard and our patio. It is in the listed section.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we want a response from Mr. Potter at all?
I would think that would be the next thing.
So Erin and Mr. Potter, would you?
Thank you very much. Before I speak to drainage, which I will get into in greater detail, the letters that were submitted to you today in support, there are.
Oh, absolutely. I apologize. Yes, sorry.
I'm Kelly Ovibpuck. I'm with Soloween Hollis. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Kelly. So there are two letters in there that are from abutters who are not residents of the properties. So there is a letter from Patricia Forner at 20 Franklin Street, so I would direct you to her support of the project, as well as Peter Timbiss, who's at 22 Franklin Street. So I just wanted to point out that those are abutters who are not part of the 125 neighborhood, excuse me, building. So regarding the drainage, there is an easement in place, and I will point you to it. So back in 2019, when the conference room was being permitted and this addition was part of the considerations, there was a great deal of collaboration done at that time with John Chorleyan, who was developing Rollins Court. And I can speak to that, because I started as the engineer for both projects. I continued through as the engineer on Rollins Court. So I was responsible for the storm water design for Rollins Court. I shared the, the neighbor's sentiment, storm water is significant, and there was a great deal of forethought given to, how could we control drainage, not only for Rollins Court, not only for 125 North State Street, but also for the neighborhood? Because when the church was there, there's an upland that flowed through the church property that ultimately made its way into the closed drainage system in North State Street, and that closed drainage system is overwhelmed. So one of the things that Rollins Court did was they, they built a large detention system to ensure that we didn't have the flooding in the basements that was seen previously with the church, but at the same time, entered into a drainage easement with three parties. So it was Rollins Court, 125 North State Street, and 20 Franklin Street. Those are the three parties to this drainage easement, landscape easement, and other matters. So I believe the city has this, but I brought a copy to ensure that they have it as part of our application, because it is certainly important into how we did our drainage design. So I will direct you to, I know you don't have this, but I'll point out that basically the storm water system at Rollins Court was designed with a certain amount of additional impervious, the future build out of 125 North State Street. So if you refer to this section that I showed on the screen, basically, it says that the new drainage and grading plan, shown as Rollins Court drainage system, has a number of catch basins, one of which is to replace CB1, which is located on the 125 North State Street property, and there's a field inlet which is on Rollins Court. The Rollins Court drainage system was designed to, and sized to accommodate the storm water contemplated in this agreement. So I will go down to the next section, which I'm not sure if you can read. I wonder if I can make that bigger. I apologize that it's, all right, let's try this. All right. So the easement reads that Rollins Court hereby grants to 125 North State Street a drainage easement to allow the 125 North State Street parking lot to be collected in CB1 and then flow into the system, and then the overland, which we talked about. So that's related to storm water. It then goes on to also talk about foundation drains, and the difference is storm water being what lands on the roof, what lands on our parking lots and our, our grass, and then runs off surfaceally as sheet flow. Foundation drains buried in the ground really take that delayed, you know, if we have high groundwater or water around our foundations. So they're not directly connected, and the easement speaks to those need to be directed to two different locations in two different ways. In other words, we can't connect any storm water to foundation drains. That wouldn't be allowed. So the easement goes on to talk about the, the additional, so there's an additional storm water allowance as part of this easement. So the additional storm water allowance in the amount of an additional storm water generated by 3,500 square feet of additional impervious buildings, asphalt, or other impervious materials. So that's our, if we had additional walkways, if we had additional parking in our buildings. So the storm water system was designed for what was on the site at the time, plus this additional 3,500. And in fact, 125 North State Street made a significant financial contribution to paying for what was the incremental upsize of the Rollins Court drainage system, and that is separate from the foundation drain. So any increase or altered storm water flow shall be substantially collected and delivered into catch basin one. It can't be connected anywhere else. So that is what we are proposing, and I can speak to the fact that the storm water model that was created for Rollins Court not only took into account the development of Rollins Court, what was existing at the time on 125 North State Street, but this incremental increase of 3,500 square feet. And though that drainage report is on file with the City of Concord as part of the site plan application, both for 125 North State Street and Rollins Court in 2019, and I believe is reflected in the easement.
Yes, it is. It is. There's a reference to the plan.
Yeah.
So this, this very issue was what John and I spent just a huge amount of time on. There were all sorts of designs, including the consideration as to the court, as to the fence, as to the common area, as to the private area, as described. And with respect to storm water, it was an integrated design of all the properties that were flowing across the former St. Peter's Church property, including property we have coming from both sides now, the 125 and the 135 coming from the other direction. And at that time, as the city records show, and as the easement that's before you shows, there was an allowance for future development, and you recall, we started off with a big building, a medium-sized building, and a small building. There was an allowance for what was immediately built, which was a front conference room, and then there was another $3,500, $3,500, well, actually $100,000, but 3,500 square feet for the amount of impervious that could be rooted to catch basin one. So we're now dealing with a substantially smaller amount of collected water as a byproduct of shrinking this design in order to respond to the concerns that we heard presented earlier about giving more setback from the fence to Rollins Court. So this is not a new issue, but it's an issue that was carefully studied and resigned, and you have before you, as you'll see in these documents, a substantially reduced project to what was shown as a two-stage project with a much larger building that's now been shrunk back. That much larger building had already had its drainage paid for, all going into catch basin one, and this is a reduction, still going to catch bases one, but a much smaller impervious area.
Yeah. So this building addition is about 2,000 square feet, so it's using just over 2,000 square feet of that 3,500 square foot allocation for additional storm water, or runoff from additional impervious area.
Okay, Earl and then Matt.
Quick question. Thank you very much. How do you treat the gutters and downspouts? Do you call that storm water?
Yep. Anything coming off of the roof, anything that's, that's superficial, so lands on a roof, lands on your lawn, lands on pavement and walkways is storm water. In our case, we don't have gutters, because it's a three-story building, it has a flat roof. Everything will be collected in roof drains that will run through the building, go directly underground, and then go to the catch basin. So we don't have to worry about issues that you experience with gutters like leaves or clogging or other things.
So, and if you can actually, can you put that language back up?
Oh, sure.
Because it's an excellent question, and this was actually thought through and designed. So the additional storm water allowance is a defined term, and you'll see it includes buildings, surface, pavement, for exactly this reason.
Oops. End of slideshow. Sorry, guys. Trying to zoom, and it's not. There we go. Is that helpful?
I see it. Okay.
You can read that.
You see after this, under the bullet, the additional storm water allowance is the amount of additional storm water generated by 3,500 square feet of additional impervious surfaces, and then here's the definition, paren, buildings, asphalt, other impervious surface, and this, of course, we're collecting from the building.
Correct. And it is, it is prescribed that it needs to go to CB1, which is the catch basin that's in our parking lot, which connects directly up gradient of the detention system that's beneath the ground within the courtyard of Rollins Court. And it clearly states that we can't exceed that amount, or we would have to do our own controls on-site in the future.
So I'm not sure Mr. Holmes has actually seen these, but there are huge retention bases that we paid for as upgrades to install in the system in the Rollins Court open area.
Thank you.
Matt?
So it seemed...
So it seems to me that this was a collaborative effort before the new neighborhood was even built. Right? So before...
To make it possible to build a new neighborhood, yes.
Because it's underneath that, so it has to be designed and planned. And lawyers have to get involved here to make this before these people, these neighbors even moved into their neighborhood, before the houses were even built.
And to further build on that collaborative effort, this isn't just a drainage memo. It's also landscaping, excuse me, drainage easement. It's a landscaping easement. And there is a, the community gardens which Rollins Court uses are actually through an easement onto 20 Franklin Street?
Yes, it's 20 Franklin Street.
So that was, you know, there were a couple of things that the neighbors were working on together to allow both of their projects to be as successful as they are. So there's an easement to the benefit of Rollins Court on 20 Franklin Street to allow them to have a little more square footage for their gardens. And that's in the easement.
I grew up in the basement of that church, and I don't remember water in the basement.
I said the same thing. I also did. But there were some concerns, yeah. No, and we looked at it very closely. And I, as the engineer for Rollins Court, I met with the engineer for 125 North State Street at the time, and we combined our models. And so there is a record of that with the city.
Any other?
Thank you.
Yes?
Question, as I look at the plans that has the three different colors, the pink, the blue, and the green. And I see the building layout key at the bottom, which kind of says March 2019, March 2020. Are those plans that came in front of, because I'm asking for historical data because I wasn't on the planning board at that time. Are those plans that came in front of the board and were just reviewed? Or was this, especially when it comes to that green one that says the 2019, was that in the time in which the conference room? Was that included in as a possible approval for an addition at a future date? Or is that...
Let me make sure I answer it correctly. So it was on the plans that went to the zoning board in 2019. It was part of the original site plan submission to the City of Concord. It then visited the architectural design review. And my understanding is through the architectural design review process, the addition was reduced to what you see in blue. However, it was not part of the site plan approval. So it was never before the city, it then, it was taken out of the site plan. It was just shown on the plans as a future because all of the utilities were built to it. The parking was built for it. All those other things were built. But it became sort of a phased plan at that time. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. The planning board never formally approved the green. It was shown in the stamped plans as coming back. At that time, we moved over to 135, which was the cash cow. That just really, not cash cow, it was money pit. And we had made a commitment to get that done before the neighbors moved in. So we were expediting construction, and frankly, we were out of cash. So we never came back on the planning board on the green, but we were informed, because it went through ADR, about all the design elements. And that's why I think they were so pleased with this last round. We had incorporated every single design element in the first shrinking, and then we incorporated further comments in the second shrinking. The second shrinking really was in response to the buffer request. So this in essence gives a massive setback where only 10 feet is required. There never was a building in the setback on M&amp;B's plans.
So that was, my next question is really only 10 feet is required between your property, building, and the neighborhood?
Correct.
But you're giving ample?
We added another 30 feet.
One more question I forgot to ask. So when I was reading that easement, it seems like these future plans were made when the easement was written. So originally, so plans to add in addition predate the Rollins Court development?
Yes. John was not able to proceed until he had concession, John Shorelian, excuse me, until he had concessions from us on 125. And then financially, it was to his advantage to have us take over 135. And that really rounded out the finances for this. But the packet of easements, including the development of the stormwater system, which at that time affected our property at 125 and 20 Franklin Street, required these negotiations before Rollins Court could ever be built. And as part of those, we invested in a far greater retention capacity than is needed for Rollins Court because it's retaining the 20 Franklin Street, the 22 Franklin Street, the 125 North State Street. It's retaining all the water coming down from that area. And we negotiated, because at that time, we knew the stair tower, which had been a 15-year project for me. The stair tower was going to have to be built, and economically, that required that the office be expanded. It was just too much of an investment. So all of that was negotiated at the time. And we had contemplated at that time proceeding with the green addition, but we've scaled it back.
One more question. So Erin, can you help me understand the total amount of storm, the water that's going into this?
Yep.
And the percentage increase that this 2,000 square feet is going to add to that?
Oh, that's a great question, Matt, and I would have to give a little more thought to that number. I can at least speak to the building. The building with the addition... Oh, shoot, do I have the number on here?
I mean, this is a question that we get with traffic a lot in the percent, you know, percentage of trips or whatever.
Let me go here. This may help us a little bit. So this is, I don't know if I can zoom in more. Shoot. I don't think I can zoom in. Oh, I have another one below. Hold on. No, I took it off. Shoot. Let me get my bearings so I can answer your question. The lock coverage is 45 or something. I don't have that so I can read it. I apologize. Okay. We'll do this. So, can't read that. I'm so sorry, guys. If you can give me one moment. I sometimes print the plans, so I don't have this issue.
Don't worry, we're not in a rush.
Yeah.
Are you speaking about the gross capacity of the, because that's an even more difficult problem.
Yeah.
I mean, you may not have an answer for this. I'm just thinking of, when I'm listening to you, you're talking about water coming into the system from all over this neighborhood. And I'm thinking, how much additional water is actually going to come off this building?
So the office addition is about 2,000 square feet from a property that is, you know, we have 45% lock coverage. Do you have a plan? I guess I should apologize.
And does stormwater come off of the Rollins Court buildings as well into this?
Oh, Heather, thank you very, very much. Appreciate that.
Yes, but not as much as from 22, 20, 125, and then on up the street. The water flows from up the street, across 22, 20, 125. All of that was modeled extensively. So it's collecting this entire downgrade that used to run through the St. Peter's Church and occasionally through the basement.
So Matt, to answer your question, there's currently 15,300 square feet of pavement or buildings, impervious surfaces on the site. With this proposed addition, there will be 18,500 square feet. So there's approximately 3,000 with the driveway and walkways and whatnot. We've included the pervious patio in that. The city requires us to count that as pervious, excuse me, as impervious. However, we're using pervious pavers, so that's why that number's a little bit bigger. So we have a 2,000 square foot building addition in the driveway and the patio. So it is not a big percentage compared to the overall runoff from the site, and certainly from the upland. There is a lot of water that comes down from the upland that also goes through Franklin Street and on to the... So this is a small percentage of that.
Thank you. I'm done now.
Are you sure?
I'm done.
One more time.
May I?
Go on, yes.
The current conditions of the back stairwell that's collapsing, do you have any visual chance, because is it not? I mean, I think I heard one of the speakers from another property that was across the street saying just what it looks like today. So I'm just curious if there was any...
You can probably pull up one, but it'd take a while. It's a lattice.
It may show the difference in the lattice that is currently there because I'm familiar that there is a lattice.
The lattice will be gone and replaced by this new stair tower. The lattice was built by the state without any zoning, planning oversight, of course, decades ago. That will be replaced by this stair tower connector between the two segments of the building. And it will have an elevator and a stair tower. That's our accessibility piece that serves both sides of the property. But we could probably find a picture of that someplace.
So the mass is there today. It obviously will look different, but there's a portion of it that's not going to be new. It's there as this latticed stair tower today.
And there's no elevation that's going higher than what is existing? It's just coming a little bit closer to the abutters?
The building itself is not. We did receive a height variance because the elevator, in order to access the third floor, the top of the elevator needs to slightly protrude. And our architect has gone to great lengths to match that in and make that design element work with the building. So that is the only thing that would extend above the roof. We are hoping, technologies have changed in the last couple of years, that maybe we can be below the variance we requested. That was the maximum that was needed at the time based on elevators. She's talking to somebody now. It may come down by a foot or two. But that's the only piece that protrudes above the existing roofline.
I have a question on that then. And I'm familiar with the building. And so the footprint where, as it exists today, the wooden thing to the right of the building, the fire escape, does this, are you saying that this tower fits within that particular footprint? Or does it exceed that footprint?
It definitely exceeds it. The stair tower, as it exists...
That I know, yeah.
Is probably 15 feet off the building. And it's all stories, and it's a lattice-covered stair tower with a roof on it. We're going to go through that area. So the hallway will be in that same area. But then we hit the elevator, the new fire safety, which, as you know, is going to be a bigger square footage than that lattice structure. And then the new office building is along the side of the existing office, and it starts coming back towards the parking lot.
Good, thank you.
Do you have the demolition plan here? And again, it's not going to get too big, but this is the existing condition that's out there today? So to answer your question, this is that stair tower.
Erin, the pointer's to your left.
Oh, yeah, I'm not good. I'm going to hit Sam.
I know you're not.
Sam, I apologize. This is the existing stair tower right here, as it is. Is that correct?
Okay, I see.
Okay.
Existing stair tower, and then if you delay that over, it would just go a little bit beyond.
Thank you.
The new addition is.
We have one other. I'll follow him.
Are you two competing over there?
Well, just, I just want to be really clear on this before I vote. One of his, one of his concerns also was the buffer zone. And I don't mean to change the subject, but I think we've covered the water pretty well. The buffer zone, I just, you're proposing pine trees, or that's what it's showing on the current...
Spruce.
Spruce, okay. Your thoughts on addressing his concerns on the buffer? Just your thoughts. How are you going to deal with that?
I don't see, as I think all the neighbors will say, they'll not be disappointed. Everything we've done has exceeded everybody's expectations. This is difficult because we've proposed a whole bunch of things, and we never get answers. So the landscape plan came out from a professional designer. We asked for requests for trees. So we're trying to do the best we can. That's the recommended fill for the gap areas. We're trying to save most of the old trees, which are more mature. We'll be able to save many of them, not the biggest, because the biggest are right where the elevator's going to be. But we've made that clear. But we're quite optimistic. So by adding this 30 feet, we do two things. The building is smaller now. But there's another feat, so if you looked at the elevation from this line of sight, which is in the packet for you, when you go over that fence, if you're right where they meet, you, sitting there for meeting, you won't be able to see anything because the fence is up here and you're down here. We're hopeful by filling in that gap with evergreens, so there'll be a buffer year-round, that that will visually complete and provide a complete screen across the whole area. We've been able to save most of the other more mature trees by stepping back this far, or we anticipate that. So I really don't see any concerns. And no, we're not going to come through and trim the trees off so that we can see their patio. We don't want to see their patio either. I'm one of those condo owners. I don't want to see that patio either. So there's no desire to mess with that, really.
Thank you.
And this picture was taken yesterday. So this portion where you can see the fence, you know, all of these trees, this screening that you see will remain, as will this tree that's there. So this, and I apologize, it's not closer, but I was trying to capture the scale. This is where those five evergreens are proposed. So it's filling in that, the gap that exists. And our goal is to establish something that is similar to what's there. So that's what we're working with our landscape.
We tried to choose some fast-growing species in the hopes that they were going to fill in. And that's what we're told is the best way to do it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I hate to do this, but I'm going back to water. So as I understand this, which may or may not be correct, there are a number of catch basins on this conglomeration of properties that are collaborating.
Correct.
All of which feed into a large retention basin on Rollins Court.
It's actually underground storage, so similar, yes.
Is that pure storage, or is that an infiltration?
It's pure storage, given the height of the groundwater in the area. So for example, in Rollins Court, we were able to, the roof runoff lands in drip edges, and that infiltrates. But as soon as water gets collected in catch basins and is down three or four feet, we're not able to infiltrate because we have seasonal high groundwater, and we don't have the correct separation. So that particular portion, so I would say the design infiltrated as much as it could. And where it couldn't, we made sure that the sizing of the galleries, the underground detention, it's designed up to 100-year storm, would hold that and meter it out without creating issues.
But may I also speak to part of your question? It doesn't all go into that. There is a perimeter drain footage system that is a so-called catch basin three. All of the cottage foundation drains go into the foundations drain side of thing, which I think is downstream from this monstrous catch basin.
That's true.
And that's why you see what you see in the easement. The foundation drains are going there, but no overland water because the foundation drains are adequate to keep all the cottage foundation drains flowing. Whereas upstream from this catch basin one feeds this retention pond, which has massive underground storage, which basically meters it out over time so that the foundation drains are never overtaken by the catch basin retention basis.
In other words, they get priority. They're down gradient, so they go out first. There's a smaller orifice. It purposely backs the water up so it's stored and metered out. So the foundation drains can always drink.
It'll actually back up to the catch basin one, which is on our property, before it will interfere with their foundation drains. That's the design, and we agreed to that.
Okay, so this is, you're probably going to laugh at this question, but is there any way of monitoring how full the capacity of the massive detention facility is?
There's no way to measure it in situ. I would have to look at, I mean, that's why we do the drainage modeling. So what we do is we develop a model that has all of the areas that contribute to it. And then we apply the different storm events. So it's a model, but we don't have any way, I mean, there's cleanouts, so you can get in there and access it if you needed to clean them out. But there's no monitoring or gauges on it, no.
If I may. You could alarm it, right? You could put an alarm in where if it hit a certain level. And you said that there is a access, there is access to pump it?
It's not designed to be pumped. It's designed to all flow gravity.
Okay, so an alarm wouldn't do you any good. Just the noise going to go off.
It'll actually back, if it fails, it'll back up on our property.
If it were not working, you would see it come out of catch basin one, which is on 125 North State Street. That's where you would see it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just think the important point here is that this stormwater system was designed with this addition in mind. It was, I mean, I helped draft this, and it was at the time that both of these projects were going forward before the planning board. And the planning staff probably remembers how much work we spent on the design of this stormwater system to make sure that it had the capacity for this addition. That was con... to make sure that it had the capacity for this addition that was contemplated on 125. So.
Good.
Okay, I guess now, I, well, let me, let me do one follow-up question, which is, I mean, we all know that the intensity of precipitation events is changing, and none of us can really predict what's going to be happening here in another twenty or fifty years. So I guess one question I have is, is there space on 125, on the unbuilt, not on buildings? And perhaps, I mean, perhaps the parking lot could accommodate this. But if twenty or fifty years from now, there is a need for more retention, is there space on that property where it could be accommodated?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly.
I was digging up the parking lot, and yes, the parking lot is open area. So far as I know, there's nothing underneath the parking lot.
Right, there's nothing precluding anyone from adding up gradient additional storage. It's not warranted or needed at this time. But to your point, should the system not be operating, given changing conditions? Like any system, it could be modified, and there could be detention added. I would suggest it's not needed now.
Not needed now, but I'm just thinking, who knows what the, what, I mean, look at what's going on in Yellowstone right now, so. Okay, thank you. Then my other question relates to the privacy concerns. And, I mean, it's, it's somewhat helpful to have the line of sight things that you have in here, but it isn't quite enough for my imagination. So I guess what I'm wondering is, in rooms that are directly overlooking the private space of Rollins Court, would there be a potential for using shaded glass in those windows, or something that would provide a little more privacy to the folks at, at Rollins Court? I mean, these views are kind of looking up. And I'm trying to turn that inside-out and envision looking down from those third-floor rooms, which I believe is the concern of the Rollins Court folks. So is there, is there some way to kind of mitigate that with window design? Or not necessarily does, or maybe higher win, I, I don't, I don't know what the answers are. I'm just wondering if there's a way to address that concern.
The way we were able to retain aesthetic values on the interior spaces, which are now, as you see, significantly smaller than what we were with earlier this year, was to bring light in. I'm not concerned about looking out. That's not what people do in those offices. There would be the possibility, you, you know, the round conference room on the other side, or some of you have seen that. We have shades on that conference room. I have no objection to installing shades on the offices on the Rollins Court side. But we really can't control what a user does with that space. But I'm not sure that would solve it, because I think we're dealing about a hypothetical issue that, if you look from the, if you're looking at the meeting area for Rollins Court, which is right up against the fence, you really can't see that from these spaces. The line of sight shows you that. But I don't mind the concept of some sort of blind system, dreadfully expensive. But we did it on the other side. It's attractive, it works. But then users make adjustments.
Just a quick question on your line of sight. Where in the plans are the line of sight for Rollins? I see it from Franklin Street, but I'm not able to find it from the neighborhood. So if you could just direct me.
That would be page eight.
Page eight?
It's identified as the community outdoor space. It's the bottom graphic on that sheet.
Sam, what sheet is that on?
Says Franklin Street line of sight.
This is C1.
C1, okay.
C1?
C, okay, that's where.
It's right up there now.
Here.
That's the one, yep.
I think this is the one.
What's that?
Those are where we have trees, right here.
Oh, State Street line of sight, okay. And Franklin Street. Okay, thank you.
Is, is there a way to, to do a, a line of sight kind of in the other direction, showing what on Rollins Court would be seen from the high windows? Do, do you understand what I'm trying to say here?
Yeah, in other words, from here, looking down, you're saying?
Correct. I mean, I, I think that, that could be helpful in demonstrating either that there isn't an issue, or that there's a potential issue that could be addressed in one way or another.
So maybe I'll save this for discussion, but I think we should talk about the neighborhood. I think we should talk about other buildings in densely populated areas like this. And we've never had any requirement, required applicants to do any of this. I think, you know, certainly the neighbors, if they, they could put a shade structure over the top, which would, you know, they could do a lot of things if they don't want to be seen, or they could waive. I mean, this is part of living in a downtown area, and not in the countryside. So, we can save for discussion, but I think that to require them to do a lot of these extras is, is just not fair.
Hey, Marie.
Heather.
What I was going to say was, the gentleman that came up to speak earlier had mentioned, you know, several aspects where he felt that the application was not complete.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question.
Yeah. And so, one of the things he mentioned were the easements. We do have that information. So we, and we know a significant amount of time in plan, you know, designing went into the easements. And I also want to point out that we're looking, we're looking at it from a perspective of, does this work from an engineering perspective? It does, that's what we've determined. Whether or not the legal documents allow them to do this or that thing, it's not this board's job to interpret legal documents. That's a private matter between citizens. So that's for them to decide amongst their legal cell, you know, their legal parties, about what they are or not allowed to do. We look at, does it work? And it, and it does, from our perspective, very well. Good job. But the one point I do have a concern about is that it is a requirement, that you show the location of structures on adjacent properties on your existing conditions and your site plan. And they have not done that. So from a legal perspective, that, it is, that is a problem. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about, where's this, where's that, you know? It's, it's here. No, it's not here. You would know that if it was actually on the plan. So that's, that's an issue, that they have not shown a location on this plan set of any of the buildings that are in Rollins Court. And then you would know, because you would see it right there, what the impacts are. And they could even show sections and elevations that shows adjacent to the addition, you know, the open space in, in the buildings. I mean, I think, in this particular location, I'm not sure there, there are any buildings, except for across the green. So if you could actually see that in an elevation, you would see, wow, it's, it's very far away to the next building across this green. But this section, this elevation here, is also not showing the buffer. So I'm wondering why you didn't put the buffer in? Because you have the community outdoor space here, and you're showing the height of the building, but you're not showing the buffer, which is going to significantly impact what a person can see or can't see. And there's no fence, which I think there is a fence, correct?
This is the fence right here.
The fence is shown in the elevation.
Right there.
Oh, that's the fence.
And we have no objection to them making this as highly likely to be. That, that's fine.
So I, I think that an elevation that shows the height of the buffer would, it would be helpful. Also, white spruce are enormous, and they're fairly fast-growing, so.
And they're also full of.
Yes.
I mean, they're not.
Yes. So I don't know what height they're being installed at. But they're, again, they're not, they're not fast-growing, but they're not slow-growing either. So if they're well-maintained, and they have adequate soil volume, they, they will get, they should get forty to sixty feet in height.
Six to seven feet per the landscape plan.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
On installation.
Perfect conditions.
Yes.
So I, I, I just want to state, like, they, I, I'm, I think they've done a fantastic job. And I don't know if there's the comfort of, I think if the community's concern is the impact, and the visual impact, I don't, I, I'm curious whether if they would be comfortable with them coming back to, with, if they came back with an elevation showing, hey, the, the buffer is actually really going to take care of a lot of these issues, of our concerns with the visibility, would they be comfortable with staff looking at that and saying, you know, it, it's showing that it is? Or, or of staff saying, you know, maybe we should put a few more here or there, or something like that. But they definitely should revise their plans to show the locations of the buildings on the existing conditions plan and the site plan. And I would suggest that as a condition of approval. Because otherwise, we do have a, an issue.
Right, right. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Then I think you folks can retreat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, should we close the public hearing?
It's up to you, if you want to close the public hearing, that would, is my next up.
Wait, we have comments from the audience who did not speak before.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Cantor, and I do live at Rollins Court. And where they want to place the building doesn't really affect me, because I live next to the roses. I'm a rose lady. But anyway, I think that we've talked a lot about the area where we meet, the small area that we meet next to the fence. I really don't think that's like the biggest thing that is of concern. What it is, is the structure that's going in with windows, it faces directly into all the living rooms and all the bedrooms on that side. There's no privacy for the, the, our residents down through there. And, you know, we're talking about the gardens, but we're talking about a residential area that's being turned into commercial area. And Mr. Potter, as nice as he is, and as wonderful as all of these buildings look and whatnot, he has bought up all the property all around us. And my concern is, what is he doing with the property all around us? And not only, you know, it's, it's turning from my home into a commercial area. And that affects me greatly. I mean, this is my life. This is my home. How would you like a building that is four stories wide, that is supposedly a, a place that you, you know, to conduct business, looking directly into your living room, looking directly into your bedroom? And, you know, I don't care what blinds you put on, and I don't care what you think about it. It's, it's an invasion into, in our privacy and our personal lives. It doesn't even have to do with our small gardens. It doesn't have to do with our small sitting areas. And when I'm listening, you know, about the water and where it goes, has he, has anybody addressed parking? How, you know, what are the parking spots in this area? There's not very much parking. And why did he purchase the property behind us? Okay, is that going to be parking? And certainly, we have an area behind where I live, that is, he's turned into a commercial area, and it's being advertised differently as we speak. I mean, I, I don't get it. You know, there's not enough parking. And the water that runs off from the parking lots, where does that go? And so is, we're just looking at it, this is just a small, small, small thing of like, oh, are they worried about their personal space for a garden? No, personally, I'm not. I'm not even concerned about my small sitting area. What I'm concerned about is I have a large building that's four stories high, looking into my neighbor's bedrooms and their living rooms. And this is where I live. I didn't sign up to be in a commercial area. I signed up to be in a residential neighborhood. And that's how I feel about it. And, you know, I've, I've listened to everybody talk about the property, and, you know, this is not going to affect, yes, this does affect us. It does affect us. We bought into this community because I thought it was a residential community setting. Not a setting where I was going to have a conference center on the, okay? And Mr. Potter's very nice, okay? And he, I, you know, the whole thing, when I bought there, you know, it was explained to me that somebody was buying that purchase, purchasing that property, but it was never disclosed until after who purchased the property. So there was a lot of things going on that I'm sure that we weren't quite sure about. And I, I'd like to know, I really honestly want to know, what is the plan for the properties? Not just the property, but the properties. On this side, on this side, and on this side. And so, you know, yes, this looks beautiful on paper. Yes, he does beautiful work. And yes, he's, you know, he's a visionary. But this is my home. This is my space that I live in every single day. And you know what? My garden, okay? You know, you want to talk about gardens, my garden is not very big, okay? And it is, it's not what you perceive. If, if he was being honest, okay, he would have paid, taken a picture, truly from the other side, looking into this, this area that you're, you're looking at. And, you know, you can sugarcoat it as much as you want, but you're really not truly, truly seeing the true picture. And I really want to know, you know, if this was your small home, okay, they're not big homes, if you really would want a conference center looking into your living room, into your kitchen window, into your bedroom. And that is exactly what this is. And, you know, when you ask the question about, is there a way, these windows, yeah, this, I think that's one of our biggest complaints, is that we have no privacy. We don't have privacy in the back. We won't have privacy on the side. We're not going to have privacy in front of our buildings. That, that's one of the things, okay? And, and I'm deeply, deeply concerned. I moved into a residential area. I did not move in to a conference center. I did not move into a commercial area. I thought this was an area that was a neighborhood. This is what the plan for pocket neighborhood, neighborhood defines what I moved into. I didn't move into a conference center. So I'm, I know that I'm charged, and I know that I'm upset, but I, I think that to really, truly, and I garden. So you know what? I'm sitting, and I'm listening to these trees thing, this tree things, and I'm thinking to myself, I might be dead before these trees are covering up my, you know, covering up this, this space. But I, you know, I think that, you know, if we're going to, we're going to talk about water, let's talk about water completely around. And let's talk about where the parking lots are going, where, you know, what his intention is for those things. Let's not sugarcoat it. I want to know exactly what this is all about. Thank you.
Did you sign the?
Yes, I will.
Sir, did you want to speak again?
There was a question from the board, or a comment from the board.
Wait, wait until you come to the microphone, please.
There's a comment from the board about how ordinarily buffer zones aren't required in a residential neighborhood. There is a provision in the site plan regulations, and I will cite it for you, 26.04, which specifically authorizes this board to require buffer zones, require plantings. It is in your power, because this is a non-conforming use in a residential neighborhood. So you have the power to require a buffer, and I would submit that you should. There was also a suggestion by Mr. Potter and his attorneys, that the restriction in the easement on tying drains into the stormwater management system only applied to existing. That is wrong. It specifically says that it applies to new construction too. And the last point, there was a question about whether we were opposing any, we recognize that he has the right to build additional impervious surface on his property and tie it into our system. We recognize that. But he only has the right to go up to 3,500 square feet. If you go to the Plan C 1 dot 2, that was shown a minute ago, they are adding 3,160 square feet of impervious surface with. So there is a problem. This board should not approve a site plan that has a problem where the easement clearly does not allow the drainage that they're requesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Aaron, do you?
I would ask the question of staff.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Aaron, hold on.
That's fine. If I may, I'll ask the question of staff, a response to that question or comment by Mr. Holmes?
These are legal documents between private citizens.
Okay, thank you.
So, if there isn't, Matt, did you?
No.
If there's no further comments or questions from the audience, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to discussion by the board.
Question of staff, have we, I'm trying to think of the decade or so I've been on planning work, have we ever required plantings to be of a certain height?
We are, you're able to.
We are able to, so if we wanted to require them to put in spruce of a certain height, we could do that.
Yeah, that's not on.
I don't remember doing that before, which is why I'm asking the question.
It's within the realm of what you could put a condition on a plan. I can't recall at the top of my head.
I mean, this comes up periodically.
I, in my previous life, we did it all the time, so I can't really parse between when we have or haven't done it in this situation. We do have requirements that things be certain heights.
I mean, they have picked a moderately fast-growing evergreen.
Usually, it's the installation height, and you pick the species that will get the height you want. So you can't say, you wouldn't say, we require you to put thirty-foot trees in, for instance.
Right.
But you might say, we require you to put trees that are eight-foot tall on installation, or twelve-foot tall installation, which would be really pretty tall, of a certain species that will be fast-growing.
What about height limitations on buildings?
Well, they already, I think they already got a height variance.
They do.
So that's a, that's a.
And so, we can't, we really can't do anything about that, because it was decided before it got to this board.
Okay.
I don't know if it, sorry, I don't know if it's, is it noted hours of operation at this, this office building or, or business is in operation? Do they typically go past five, six, or is there no?
I'm not aware of those details, they were not submitted with the application.
As they said, you know, being able to look into their window, but is anyone in the office after dark anyway, you know?
In the winter.
In the winter, yeah, okay.
If I may, just make a comment, I think we're, I think we've covered this a little bit, we're really treading on thin ice here with height limits and mixed zoning and so on. I mean, I think of the DES building, that's going to be, you know, five stories, and it's in a residential, yes, it's on South Main Street, but there are residences around there, and so on and so forth. So I, this is the first I've heard on, especially in a mixed zoning, that we, it suggested that we limit or make an applicant provide some sort of shading. I mean, you can put shades in two windows, the ones you look out and the ones you're afraid that people are going to look in. So, I just, I just make that comment, and.
I'm not sure we can even require anything of that sort of.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we, the purview is the site, not inside the building.
Gotcha, thank you, that clarifies it. So, if you're, are you looking for a motion to go forward, conditional approval, based on getting the new sightlines from, and showing the buffer zones, and so on and so forth?
I would suggest at this point, the board should determine whether you want to motion to approve it, subject to condition, as I noted.
Right.
Or whether you would like to continue it to the next hearing, subject to seeing them providing additional information or graphics.
Before we do that, could you answer for me what that would do? Right, so if they provide this look, what would that do for us? Like, how would?
You might, you would be able to look at it and say, oh, this satisfies, we do think what you're proposing is appropriate. Or you might say, hmm, you know, maybe you should actually do X, Y, Z, and that would make it better.
And some of those things, so Sam, you spoke about the trees could get up to sixty feet tall, some of these buffer, the spruce trees?
I imagine they could.
Right, and then the planting, we mentioned how high they would get, the building is, what, forty feet tall?
I think the ability the board has is to make, is to mitigate impacts.
Right.
And so, if you were to postpone it based on them bringing back more, that more information, you could see if there are any mitigate, any impacts that you feel that could be mitigated, or what that might be. If you don't feel like there is anything, then that might be cause to a motion to approve, you know, subject to them providing the information that's required. So I think it's just up to what, do you feel there may be impacts that you could determine can be mitigated, or whether you feel they've already done. I'm a little confused, a little bit, because when I'm looking at the plan, it looks like a pretty robust buffer is existing and being filled in, so like, there's not necessarily more that you could put more rows of trees, but if they're still going to get as tall as they're going to get, it's not clear to me what more they could or should do to make it a more robust buffer, because it's a buffer that's existing there, and that they're filling in, so.
So I'm comfortable with making this a condition, because I don't think if they show these sightlines differently, that's going to impact my decision one way or the other.
Right.
Because I think that they have shown the buffer, they just have, unfortunately, they've omitted that part of it. So it's a requirement of approval for them to show that, so if we condition that, I'm comfortable with moving forward.
And I would second that.
I would agree. I have just the one comment, though, and I'm not refuting any of the other witnesses, and I appreciate what you've said, I appreciated your comment, I'm the last lady. However, my only comment is that I don't live quite downtown, but Auburn Street is kind of, you know, in the city, and I chose to live there, because I didn't want to see my neighbors. The 125, 125 was a commercial situation prior to Potter Place. So, so anybody that bought into 125, I mean, bought into Potter Place, had a.
Rollins Court.
Rollins, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of Rangeli, I was in your house in Rangeli. So anyway, I'm saying that Potter Place, Rollins Place.
Someone write it down.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Rollins Place came after 125. So anybody buying into Rollins knew that they were buying in next door to a office, at least at that point, an office building, that had additional plans in place to add to that building.
Or if they, or if they didn't, then it's not necessary.
Now, if they didn't, due diligence, and, but I remember the rectory, the old rectory from St. Paul's, Peters.
Terrible.
I was in that too, because that was open to the public on occasion, so there were two public buildings going on on either side of Rollins. So anybody buying there had to accept the fact that, one, they were living downtown, there's a lot of people that are, they're ten feet away from their neighbors, and they look into each other's windows, because there's no other way around it. So that's just more of a comment on my part, that 125 was there first, it established its relationship in the community, in the neighborhood, as they say, and that that had to be taken into consideration if you were purchasing. That's my only comment. Terrible comment, I understand, but, thank you.
That's for Earl.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
Sure.
Do you need to frame what it is that they need to provide? Frame the condition for us?
Sure, do you, do you want to go to the report and see what the, what staff? Have you, have you drafted anything in the interim? Not to put you on the spot.
Sure. Yeah, it sounds like there is interest in adding conditions that the Rollins Court buildings, the footprint of those buildings be added to the existing conditions and site plans, so that you can at least see the proximity of those buildings to the proposed development. And it sounded like a, a new sightline rendering with the buffer in place is up in the air. There's been, gone back and forth on that, but that was the other thing I noted.
We're not going to see it, though.
Well, I think we need, it needs to be on the plan.
That's not a requirement of the plan, that would just be for the purpose of determining. It needs to be, the building footprints need to be on the existing conditions in the site plan. The elevation showing the buffer for, you know, information purposes isn't necessarily a, isn't a requirement, unless you want them to come back to determine the impacts.
So Sam, can you read the required, the requirement for us?
To show the footprints of the Rollins Court buildings within the scale of the plan as shown.
And that be a condition of approval?
And is that an existing precedent condition, or is we adding that?
A subsequent condition under two B four, five?
That would be a precedent.
It would have to be precedent, yeah.
A precedent, okay.
So you could just make your regular motion, subject to precedent conditions one, two, and three, with the addition of condition four, that building footprints be shown on plans as required.
What she said.
I'm going to have to start, start with the ADR first.
All right, is someone ready to?
So I'll make a motion that we grant architecture design review approval for the building designed of the two thousand thirty-five square foot footprint, three-story office building, addition to the existing building, 125 North State Street and associates site improvements.
I'll second, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I'll make another motion that we grant major site plan approval for the construction of the same thing, with precedent conditions one through three, and an additional condition to satisfy the requirement that Sam stated, and then subsequent conditions one through four.
Then I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay.
Moving on.
Aaron's coming back up.
So we have to find our chair, is he?
Come on, my lady. We are retrieving him.
Get more water.
I've already done.
Are you good on waters?
I'm there.
That's all the water.
When I lived, I lived downtown, my backyard, a budded fire department.
You weren't kidding.
Ooh.
Ooh.
I didn't know.
I love, I didn't know anything. Hey, once in a while, the fire alarms will go off, and then it would run out, sirens would go off.
When we've gained someone, welcome, Miranda.
I can stay.
Are you hiding in the back, pretending?
Okay, let's, let's continue on. After that brief interlude, where are we? So that was 7D on our agenda, let's read item 7E into the agenda, if we, to the record, if we could.
Erin Lambert, PE, on behalf of the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, request major site plan approval to convert a two-unit residential structure into a six-unit residential structure at 120 to 122 Pleasant Street in the Institutional District. I believe this was previously determined complete, and not a development of regional impact. Do we have a staff update?
Not much to add to that, the original staff comments did not have anything substantive in them. This project has received a number of variances, and nothing else to add.
Erin Lambert, we haven't seen you in ages.
Evening, friend.
Welcome back. If you could state your name for the record, Ellen?
This is, I'm Ellen Groh with the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness.
Well, welcome to the table, you've got an interesting-looking project here, why don't you go ahead and get us started whenever you're ready, Ellen? Oh, I'm sorry, Erin.
I need some help.
Yeah, it's okay.
Do you want me to just do my little? Yeah, if you don't mind. Quickie spiel, so, so we are converting this building into a total of eight one-bedroom apartments? Sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to get in the way, your way, what you're trying to do. We're taking a structure that now has four apartments in it, and returning it into eight apartments. And they will all be for people who are coming from homelessness, they will all, we're applying for funding, that they will all have rental assistance, that will make them affordable to someone who is living only on disability income, and returning them into one-bedroom apartments, because that, we're tending to serve just single individuals, and that works best for the population that we're serving, that they have their own apartment. This is a permanent housing, it's not a group home or anything like that, it's just a small apartment that any one of us might choose to live in. And that's the project.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience, while I got the computer back up. Erin Lambert, Wilcox and Barton, here tonight to present the site plan for, as Ellen mentioned, the property at 120 and 122 Pleasant Street. This is the site plan, and just to orient you, we are on the corner of Pleasant Street and Liberty Street. It's about a point five-six acre property located in the Institutional District. There's a house, and then there is a separate carriage house, and as Ellen mentioned, there are four units in the main building currently, two in the carriage house, and we are converting them all into one-bedroom units. So the total number of bedrooms on the property will remain the same, it's just that in the main building, where there's currently a four-bedroom and a two-bedroom, will become six one-bedroom units. All of the upgrades to the building are internal, there's no additions proposed, with the exception of they're shoring up a portion of the building, and I can point out where that is, but there are no external improvements to the building that are proposed. The site improvements are limited to paving the driveway, adding walkways to each of the residence doors, adding adequate drainage controls for the additional impervious, and upgrading a couple of utilities. We're exploring if they meet current commercial requirements, or if they need to be upgraded, that would relate to water and sewer. As was mentioned, there were a number of variances granted, mostly related to the square footage of the property, we don't quite meet the minimum, but we do with the variance, allowing eight dwelling units, allowing dwelling units that are slightly smaller than perhaps the minimum size. So those were all granted, and the one I'll draw your attention to is, there was a variance granted to allow continuation of the non-conforming parking lot layout with eight spaces where sixteen are required. So that's eight units, eight parking spaces, one per unit, which we feel is adequate, there is some on-street parking in the area. So this is the site plan that is before you. We are basically paving the existing driveway in its existing configuration. So that's what you see in gray, there is a pretty good-sized depression in the parking lot, so paving the parking will be a significant improvement. so paving the parking will be a significant improvement. There are three spaces here, one of which is ADA, and then five here. So this is slightly different than what was in your packet, because we were working to preserve an existing tree. And I will get to some pictures of that in a moment.
Hey, hang on, sorry. So slightly different from our packet, how?
Yeah, only in that there's, see, there's one, two, three spaces here. There used to be a fourth space.
There was four, okay.
To the east, and that required us to take out a tree.
I got you, I got you, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, great question. So that we did to, really, we wanted to preserve as much of the existing trees as we could. So let me just talk through the landscaping and how we comply with the landscaping ordinance. There's a pretty good wooded area to the west, and I have a picture to show you in a moment. These are the four trees that we're preserving in the vicinity of the parking and the driveway. Two are required to meet the one per two thousand square feet, we've got the four. There's two here, and there's two, this is a lovely wooded area. When I was out there taking the picture, it actually is currently shading this corner of the parking lot. We're preserving a couple of shrubs and working to preserve the lilac bush that's, that's in between the parking spaces today. So this is the picture of that tree that we were working to preserve. So these are the two sort of large trees that you see here and here on the site plan. We'll be preserving those. So really, the driveway, the paved driveway, will start where you see the brick. You can see why it's important for us to pave the driveway, it's in, it's in poor condition, but it will come up to standards. And then this is the sort of vegetative buffer to the west that we were talking about. So there's a tree here and a tree here that are shown on the plan here. And then this is the lilac bush, we're going to have to take out some of the vegetation, but this lilac bush is staying, basically, we're preserving this edge of pavement that's there today. So those are the site improvements. We are putting in a series of walkways to get people to the doors. So this is the door to the carriage house, there's a door here, a door here.
Sorry, can you use the?
Oh, yeah, I can, sorry, Sam. All right, so on the main house, there's a door here that we're making accessible. It currently has steps. There is a door right here in the corner, there's an existing door here. There's a door to the carriage house, which has two units in it. And then we're extending a walkway around, there's a set of steps that go up to the porch that leads to a center stair that leads to the second-floor apartments. There is a walkway out to the right-of-way, but we also wanted to include a walkway so that they could get from their cars, and it's a walkway that the, that they can maintain in the winter. So that is the extent of the site improvements, with the exception of adding some, some drainage controls to offset the additional runoff, and potentially upgrading the water and sewer to meet the current commercial standards. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
So eight units, eight parking spots, one of them accessible. So again, this is a, a different type of project than I'm normally used to seeing. So eight units typically would see lighting and all kinds of other things involved. So what, are you going to be doing, any lighting in the, in the parking area?
Not lighting the parking, but we are lighting the building, and it'll have a motion sensor on it, so it comes on when people are walking.
Okay.
And it will be off when it doesn't, it isn't needed.
Visitors to the, to the property then would park in the street? And I know it's a busy area, there's a lot of parking in that area, a lot of Concord High parking in that area, so.
I think we envision there's some parking available on the street for theirs, and in speaking with Ellen and the other staff, not everybody has cars. So even, there was, there should be available parking, even if all eight units are rented out to their, their clients.
Okay. Okay, other questions, Amanda?
I know that this is apartment rental, and, and you mentioned, maybe not everybody, is there ever going to be any staff that would be on-site, that would possibly need that extra spot that's not being provided?
There probably will be staff from time to time going, going to visit. So again, there is some on-street parking nearby, and, and in one of our, one of our properties now, a four-unit, not a single person has a car. So we really are anticipating that not all those spaces will be used by the residents.
I'm fairly familiar with Liberty, I drive down it almost every day, as I live right near there as well. And with that, I was just asking, I figured there'd probably be, even someone just coming to visit for facilities maintenance, you know?
Right, right.
But, but there wouldn't be someone that's stationed there twenty-four hours.
No, no, there's not going to be, no, not at all. And there's not even an, an office space. So anyone, any staff going to visit are, are going to someone's house to visit them at their house, so.
Okay, good.
So, and I might, I'm sorry, I might have missed it. The existing driveway that's there now, it's obviously pieced me on, needs to be replaced, bricks and whatnot. Is, are you increasing or changing the size of the driveway at all?
It had to get wider, because right now, there isn't a twenty-four-foot aisle behind the spaces, and to bring it up to commercial code, we've got the standard nine-by-nineteen spaces and twenty-four-foot aisle. So the spaces are coming closer to the building. So all that brick will get removed, and, and a full pavement section will get installed. So the parking is coming a little bit closer to the houses to meet the standards.
And you're in the middle spot, backing out straight, there's no parking on that back?
No.
The back, the parallel parking at that point, right? Everybody comes in and parks straight?
Yes.
Enough of a swing capabilities. And I'm guessing, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm guessing that the sidewalk that comes around the building from the front, from the Pleasant Street side, you can't go around the other side, because it's too tight to go around that way, right? Between the carriage house and the side of the building, it looks like it's a little tight.
Yes, the grade drops off pretty significantly from the house down, so this is the, a route that is easiest to maintain and safest for folks to walk on.
And the accessible unit is first floor from the parking lot? It's that one that he's showed right in front of the accessible?
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah.
I think it's the one on the, the bottom left, I think it's that one.
But it's accessible from that door, right?
Jonathan, I hear Jonathan saying yes.
So show me where the accessible door is again, I think it, that's the accessible door?
Yep.
Okay, I thought it was on the other side.
So all of, and all of these doors will be accessible. So we've created an accessible walkway to this door, to the units, to this door, to this door, and we've eliminated a couple of steps and actually made this door accessible as well.
That's the one I thought you said was the accessible, okay.
Yep.
So they're all accessible?
They are, with the exception of two that are upstairs. So we brought them to the walkway, they have to use stairs to get up on the porch, but they also need to use stairs to get to the apartment.
And the two carriage house ones are single-story first floor, or?
One, one up and one down.
Okay, so the upstairs one would not be, the downstairs one would be?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, saw somebody's hand, Earl, yeah?
Very quickly, what, what's the history of this property? What was it?
I, I think it was a single-family, I think, it was a single-family home that then had a two-bedroom apartment stuck on the side of it, and then the carriage house was, you know, whatever it was, a carriage house turned into apartments later on. I believe, that's certainly the way it looks.
Thank you.
What, can somebody remind me what the variances were that were given by zoning?
Sure.
They're there.
Erin has her up on the screen.
Oh, oh, who did, how?
She showed them earlier, too.
I'm sorry, did you really? I was looking at the plan.
They led with those.
I was looking, yeah.
So there are five, two of them relate to the, you know, allowing eight dwelling units.
Yeah.
And then one of them, the second one down, is where the minimum lot size is twenty-five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
We only have just over twenty-three thousand. The units may be slightly smaller than the minimum six hundred square feet. And then the, the allow, we're allowed to continue the parking layout with eight parking spaces.
Great, okay, thank you. Right, other questions, Matt?
I'm curious, this is, is not a site plan issue. So I was reading an article in the Times, New York Times, yesterday about Houston, and how Houston solved its homelessness problem, and thought, wow, we have a homelessness problem in Concord. And this seems to be chipping away this much at it? How, how much farther do we have to go?
We estimate that there's about a hundred and seventy long-term homeless people in Concord. So we are chipping away at it slowly, and we want to chip away at it much bigger through more of this type of project, as well as other things.
Yeah, it's great, thank, thank you.
David?
My question is, eight units, is there a couple, let's say somebody moves in in one of the units with the person that's on, or they cohabitate a unit, so there are potentially maybe sixteen people in this building? Or what's to prevent a homeless person to move in and then have his significant other and that, and a child move in to us?
Well, we, this, properties will be managed by Concord Housing and Redevelopment, so they know more of the rules about how many people you could put in one of these units. But generally speaking, and so if you have a child, you run into rules about whether you could have a child and two parents in a one-bedroom apartment. I don't know all of those rules as well as Concord Housing and Redevelopment knows them. I will say, the people that we serve, the clients who will be allowed, who will go on the waiting list for these apartments, ninety-nine percent are single individuals, men and women, both, but singles. There is a couple, you know, some couples, and occasionally, we serve a family with a child, but that's just not the client that we typically serve. So, so you might end up with a couple of couples in there, but it's going to be mostly single individuals.
Okay, questions? Any member of the audience have any questions about this application? Looks like we've lost everyone, huh? Okay. All right, we will close the public hearing, any other comments from staff or the board? No? Okay, so before us, we've got recommendations on three point one, is to grant ADR approval for the conversion of an existing two-unit apartment building into a six-unit building with an associated shared driveway access and pedestrian walkway improvements. That's right, because it's two units in the carriage house, so it's six units. Do we have a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Three point two is to grant major site plan approval for the conversion of an existing two-unit apartment building into a six-unit apartment building with associated shared driveway and access, with associated shared driveway access and pedestrian sidewalk improvements, subject to the following precedent conditions, which are outlined in precedent conditions one through five, and subsequent conditions one, two, and three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan approval as outlined?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion has been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you guys are set.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good luck with the project, it looks exciting.
Thank you very, very much.
And.
How many times are you going to come back?
We'll see you back again. Hope so. Okay, so let's move back, six D, you said?
Yeah.
So we just got to move back one step again, guys, sorry?
Right, so what, I don't recall what we did do, but what we were trying to do was pull it from consent, remove it from the table, close the public hearing, because technically, the public hearing is still open from tabling it last month, and then motion to approve. So from a legal perspective, like, that, those are all the steps that need to be taken when you table something.
Okay.
Sorry, it shouldn't even have been on consent, because of all the steps.
But six D, we approved in consent.
No, you didn't.
Didn't we, oh, we took it out, sorry, we took it out. So we need to make a motion to table six D, is that what you're telling me?
No, no, it was, it was tabled last month.
Okay.
So you need to remove it from the table.
Okay, and do what with it?
Close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we will remove it from?
I move, we remove it.
Remove it from table, we got a second to remove it from table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the new sign as submitted, or the revised sign as submitted? Is that right?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion has been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Never closed public hearing.
Oh, we got to close the public hearing.
He never closed the public hearing, it's okay.
That's right.
There's so many public hearings that are still open right now, it's not even funny.
That's assumed, okay, so.
Carol did a good job closing it.
Yeah, so let's, let's move on to other business. Is there any other business which will legally come before the board tonight? I don't believe so, if not, yes?
Sorry, can I, I know, I just saw that Heather put that, the removal of the subdivision condition. I think that was going to be the Ben Stevenson discussion, but I just wanted to talk to the solicitor's office about the best way to do that, because it's on a recorded plan. So I think we'll bring that back to you next month.
Okay, so.
Or we can just wait until he comes back and asks for it, if he ever wants to subdivide.
Because it was my understanding that he was going to do four lots.
And he only ended up with two.
And he only ended up with three because of that, so.
We also think it's because if he did four lots, it would have been clustered, and he'd have to put sixty percent in open space. So we think there was two reasons why he didn't do the four lots, so.
So let's recognize that item nine, which is on our other business for subdivision discussion on the Talent Road project, we'll recognize that next month, we don't have to do anything table.
Yeah, you don't have to do anything, I just wanted to bring that up since it's on there.
Okay, so we'll let Carol make a motion to table, since she did it.
No, no, that's already tabled.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, sorry.
It's on the table.
No, we did six D.
Are we ready to adjourn?
Yeah.
So we'll let Carol make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Just a second.